I'd like to call to order this public hearing at the elementary school. USC 497 Board of Education welcomes you and thanks you for taking time to participate in this public hearing. For the safety of all those in attendance, display of signs or banners will not be permitted. If you have a sign or banner, it will be asked to leave it outside the meeting room in preparation for the meeting. Today's public hearing is a meeting of the Board held in public under discussion by the Board. Please be respectful of the presenters of the Board and your fellow audience members as we hear the comments during today's hearing. Comments or actions that are redneared or disrespectful of the presenters, the Board, or others in attendance, including using foul language or any other behavior that is disruptive of the Board meeting will result in immediate removal from the meeting. Patrons will be invited to share comments as part of the public hearing portion of the meeting as outlined in Board Policy DCBI. That time is designated on today's agenda for members of the public to share their thoughts. It is not a time for dialogue with or questioning the members of the Board. Patrons who wish to participate in the public hearing must fill out the public comment form or sign up on the sign up sheet before the start of the hearing. The district assumes no responsibility or liability for the information shared during the public hearing. The views expressed are solely those of the speakers and do not necessarily reflect the views of most public schools. In addition, USC 497 will provide public access to this meeting through posting a recording of it on the platform used by the district for live streaming videos of the Board. The platform used for this purpose has its own use rules for content on its site. While the district does not deliver live streaming videos, the platform may do so if the content of public comment or any other portion of the meeting is found to violate the platform's acceptable use rules. Thank you for your cooperation in these areas. At this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Lewis, our superintendent of schools, to provide background information before we get officially open the public hearing. Thank you, Dr. Lewis.
I was trying to make sure my click was working. So, one more. First of all, good evening, good afternoon, and thank you so much for being here. Before I get started, I do want to recognize Dr. Smith. There she is. Here you go. Thank you so much for opening the doors here so we can meet with the community. Also, I want to recognize the Pinkney staff. Pinkney staff members, you know, stand right here. And that is the true testament to the staff here at Pinkney. Not only over the past several years, but more broadly this year, the incredible gains that have been taking place, and that's because of the work of the staff. So, Dr. Smith and the staff, thank you so much for what you have done. So, I want to go over just a few things. As I mentioned that, you may have received on this sheet just some brief reminders. They're on the screen here that those that chose to sign up either did so by emailing public comment and USC497.org today that you will provide public comment today, or you may have signed up when you came prior to the start of this meeting. Keep in mind, public comment today is that your Pinkney can be related to either school. So, either Pinkney or Broken Arrow. Those are the two schools that are being proposed for closing. Shannon already mentioned childcare, those that have come in after her announcement. If you want to take advantage of our childcare room 125, I have Selena and Emma that will be taking care of the children there. Also, the district will and is recording this session. Thank you to Mr. Saltz and Mrs. LST. They are recording this session and it will be on our YouTube channel by Monday. And I have to plug and congratulate Dr. Mr. Saltz, who will be honored tomorrow for as one of our Teachers of the Year hearing long. So, thank you so much. Oh, that's right. We will both be here. We're both here. So, thank you so much. That's very welcome. All right. And so, the hearing part is similar to public comment at a board meeting where you come up to the mic and you address the Board and they will not engage. So, it's not a debate. It's just you will be invited for three minutes to share your thoughts, concerns, or your ideas. Okay. This is from the statute, the state statute. So, I want to allow me just to read this verbatim, which I don't really like to do on my PowerPoint. But the Board of Education of any school district may close any school building anytime the Board determines that the building should be closed to improve the school system. The Board may close the building by adopting a resolution to the effect that to that effect, it may close more than one school building in one resolution. The resolution must be adopted by majority, both of the Board of Education, and requires no other approval. So, if the Board decides to move forward with the closure of one, two, or either school, they will vote on that resolution on Monday at the board meeting. Following the hearing, following today and after consideration, considering the evidence submitted at the hearing, the Board must determine whether the school building should be closed to improve the school system of the unified school district. If the Board finds the school should be closed, it must adopt the resolution to close the school. If the Board concludes the school should remain open, then no further action is required. Along with those items from that state statute, we also are following Board Policy DCAE as relates to public hearings and Board Policy AG as it relates to school closings. And as I stepped over here, I also need to be reminded to thank and acknowledge our American Signers and Interpreters, Kim and Stacey, for being here. So, as a reminder, hopefully that you know that the district has experienced declining enrollment and as a result, a loss of funding. We get our funding through enrollment and the number of students that are in our district. Five-year enrollment projections, these are district-wide projections, indicate continued enrollment decline. And so, the district cannot afford to continue to operate currently as it has been operating and as we also consider the annual inflationary cost that are within the limitations of the Kansas State funding formula. And so, I also want to take a moment to recognize one of our elected officials, Senator Marks Francisco, who is also in the audience, that has been advocating for continued funding for a number of years. So, thank you so much for being here today. So, these funding limitations also have contributed to our ability to continue to pay our staff an adequate wage. So, that's one of the priorities that we'll talk about here in just a minute. In addition to that, it has impacted our ability to address our contingency reserve fund or our savings account essentially. And currently, we're saving about maybe 1% investment in our contingency reserve fund. And that's 1% of our total budget. And so, to kind of put that into perspective, the average percentage across districts around the state of Kansas is around 16 or 17% of their annual, I'm sorry, yeah, their annual budget. And so, I would like to say we have a major problem. We have a major math problem. And so, we kicked the can down the road. Previous boards, previous superintendents have kicked the can down the road and the thing is getting heavier and heavier. And so, this year, the school board hired consultant R.S. and Associates, who's not new to Lawrence, and initiated the futures planning process. And many of you may have been a part of that process in some way. And so, the process included charging a broad-based representative, superintendent, advisory committee that consisted of parents and some staff members and students to suggest ways that we can address this problem that we have. So, the process also included community survey, which many of you participated in, two community input sessions, one at Free State and one at Lawrence High School, an online feedback forum, and other public input opportunities. And so, the futures planning committee objectives, again, was the Board's priorities and communities' priorities, to want to achieve competitive staff wages so that we can address the national educator shortage that's going on not only in Lawrence but around the country, that's impacting our ability to recruit and retain high-quality staff, allocating funds for annual cost increases, those things like health insurance and operational costs, and our ability to increase cash balances, which I mentioned is our savings account. And so, guided by the work of the futures planning committee and community input, district administration recommended to the Board a plan that included school closures. So, the Board directed us to find funds that we can address these three objectives. And so, at the February 27th, board meeting that ended up on, so really February 28th that morning, the Board approved to schedule and publish the notice of public hearings for potential closure of the Broken Arrow Elementary School and Pinkney Elementary School. As you know, the Board did remove Whitman from that list. And so, the district plans to use, continue to use those facilities if the Board approves that they can close for other educational purposes. In addition to that work, the boundary advisory committee has been to consider the impact of school closures and looking at boundary issues that will accommodate these potential closures and redistribute our elementary students to other schools. The boundary advisory committee has recommended changes, and those changes, if approved, would be effective school year 2023, 2024. Keep in mind that the boundaries must be approved by the Board. So, the Board have like a, what they typically call like a first read, a first look at the boundaries. They cannot put them that high in the first read, but then they have to, or engage the community, and then come back at a subsequent meeting to approve those boundaries. So, we think about where those savings came from. The Board did approve also at his last meeting, those from the high school staff cuts. And so, we're already in, or currently in the process of operationalizing that for some of $3.2 million, and then closing the $2 elementary schools where costs around $300,000 to $400,000,000 moving forward. So, that would save these integrally for, for a total estimated savings of $3.8 to $4.00, $4.00 million. And to put that into perspective, we're still digging ourselves out of the hole. And to really get out of the hole, or we are coming up the hole, it's not close to $16 million. So, it's not a matter of this or that. It's this and that, you know, wherever those other savings will come from. And so, as we take a look at Pinkney, I've shared this at the previous board meeting, included some basic information as it relates to the enrollment, projected enrollment, five-year projected enrollment, as well as the capacity of the building, the number of staff in the building, the composite score that was generated by the futures planning committee, and then the equity impact. And so, I want to be clear on the equity impact. Those questions that were asked during that process were questions like who will benefit, who will not benefit, who is intentionally being discredited or marginalized, what evidence can be provided to support or refute that construct, and what are the anticipated barriers associated with this recommendation? And then what is the plan to address these barriers? And so, if we think about what their potential new schools can provide, that equity impact was a lesson to that. And so, for the rationale, we look at to bring the building up to 80% new condition will cost a little over $500,000 based on the five-year projections. The building will be below the 65% to pass them. And so, these are just the potential suggested ideas for use will be our East Heights programs that are currently housed in East Heights, which are our C-Trend, Project Serch, our therapeutic classrooms, and our suspension alternative program. And so, those are the most potential uses of that building. I shared a little bit more depth of Broken Arrow this morning, but I just want to share that again, whether it was that made you the audience for Broken Arrow. As I mentioned, the boundary advisory committee did take some time to look at several different scenarios as it relates to what the new boundaries may potentially look like. This is a draft of what they came up with. There should be some posters around the room as well as standouts with this information on it. So, what that would mean for Pinkney if the Board decides to move forward with that resolution to close Pinkney, 124 students will attend Deerfield Elementary and 45 will attend Hill Press Elementary. Again, these are estimates just based on current enrollment, and obviously those are subject to change. And then what's shared that was the one that the Broken Arrow hearing included. And so, in addition to just these two school boundaries, there are some other shifts that may impact or will potentially impact other students throughout the district, and those are the results of those potential other boundary shifts. So, that was the data. That was the data. The hard numbers. I do want to take a moment to acknowledge, to acknowledge the current reality of what we're facing and acknowledge the current emotion, the current pain, anger that's associated with school closures. And it has been stated that closing a school, the risk of potential closing a school is similar to the risk of losing a loved one. And I do want to acknowledge that. And I will say, although it was many years ago, I experienced that as a student during my elementary school, a central elementary school that closed after my fourth grade year and had to go into a new school for my fifth grade year. I experienced that as a principal in another district where the district at the time closed about 36 schools in one year in welcoming about five different schools into our school. That transition is critical to the students' continued success. And so, what we do in terms of providing current and future support during this process, the scholars, staff, and families will be critical. But this is what I know. This is year five. What I know about our educators, and this is teachers, classified staff, administrators, we have some amazing staff in all of our buildings that will take care of the Pinkney students. That I do know. And so, as we think about just where we are now and why we're here today, it's for our Board and us to hear, continue to hear, concerns, what's top of mind for you, and also to just listen. And so, again, after today, the Board will be on Monday, and again, there will be another opportunity for public comment, those that maybe couldn't make it this morning or today, to provide that information to the Board. Should I address everything? So, as I mentioned, next steps, I already mentioned that, and again, a little bit to YouTube to support students, staff, and families during this transition. So, with that, I will turn it over to Board President Kimball to open the hearing.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis. At this time, a motion would be in order, well, first let me just read through the procedures and then we'll walk through the motion. I will invite to the podium those who have signed up to give comment during the public hearing. When your name is called, please come to the microphone. Each speaker will have up to three minutes. I'm going to call three people at a time, so I'll call the person speaking, and I'll call the next two people in line so that we can, you can queue up and you can keep the comments moving that way. If you have any handouts for the Board, please take them to our clerk and give them to her, and she will distribute those to the Board. I'm also going to ask the audience, please, if you wish to show appreciation, please do so silently. Please don't flapping during the public hearing. We need to make sure that everybody's comments can be heard in the time that we have today. A lot of our hearing public comments, so appreciate your cooperation in that area. Thank you. At this time, motion is ordered in order to remove the public hearing.
This is Carol. I'm with the Board of Education of the state of Arkansas. Do you raise school building care? Good. Can I ask a second?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
I will call to the microphone, Rakan Hoffer first, and then Lynette Littlejohn and Eleanor Gardner. Rakan Hoffer, are you here? Okay. Lynette Littlejohn, and then Eleanor Gardner and Jen Meekus.
So, I'm probably going to end up with a lot of reading and maybe not so much to feed you guys at all times. Hi, I'm Lynette Littlejohn. First off, thank you for your service. I am personally a public servant and making my decisions can be very dangerous as well. Next, and possibly most important thing you can do and know today is that you do not have to vote yes on Monday night. You can respect this community and the people that work in and have to, and give this a matter of detailed planning and transparency that it deserves. I understand that you guys at Mike have already done all the detailed planning, but you have not shared with this community, and that is not okay. Okay. I have lived here in Lawrence most of my life. I attended Pinkney Elementary School. I attended Westerham High, and I graduated from Lawrence High School. I've been telling you through and through. My husband and I have lived in the Pinkney neighborhood for eight years. We chose to live in this neighborhood long before our four-year-old son arrived. We chose to live here because we wanted to raise our future children in a colorful and diverse neighborhood. We did not want to raise him in a neighborhood full of choke homes. In the end, we have only had one child in his life or lives. We want him to live in a community where he can attend a small school, a school deeply rooted in Lawrence history, a school he can walk to, a school where he can easily go from kids from out of all ethnicities, cities, and economic backgrounds, a school which representation gives back to the neighborhood we love. Pinkney Elementary gives back to its families in both non-conventional and non, conventional and non-traditional ways. Do you know that Pinkney Elementary has a P T and R and M lottery facilities for its families? Do all of other schools and USC 497 support its families in such a compassionate way? Does Deerfield? When all of this is said and done, our son will be okay. We have the means to make sure he gets a solid education, a ride to school with his belly, lean clothes on his back in a safe home. He is surrounded by the benefits of our generational wealth. If you do not know what the term generational wealth means, please look it up before Monday night. I wait on the majority of the 500-plus kids who will be attending Deerfield to come from economically safe families. This may not have set any of the children who transfer will be transferred out of the community. I wait, do the good numbers guarantee that Deerfield will qualify for Title I funding? If so, how long will it take to qualify? See, this is one of those things that if the process was more transparent, we'd already have answered it. If Title I status is not guaranteed, make no mistake, there will be kids that will go hungry, hungry, and fall behind their peers academically. If you do not guarantee busing, kids will have to cross McDonald's right at Second Street. There are no side walks, either side of Second Street, or at least one block leading up to this intersection. Ironically, these kids will smarten past this 97 and 98.
Thank you very much. You have comments to share? If you have anything you'd like to say, you can ask them. Next is Eleanor Gardner, and Jen Meekus, and Amy. Hi. I don't know if I'm in or not, but what I can see from this school board is favoritism.
No one at this school is contacted or considered a modestory program. It's a small building with smallest footprint, but we're supposed to believe this was the best place to put a program intended to attract kids from all four schools or divisions toward the growth. A Pinkney parent has been sharing a viable plan for solar power for the district, takes advantage of the online or the once-in-a-lifetime incentives. This will rapidly save the district millions of dollars right away, and it could make money selling power back to the grid. Yet, it is done out of the fraction of the interest of staff time that is devoted to setting up the modestory program. Two years ago, this brought to our attention that the combination of ESOL students and very hard attachment of those coming over from Kansas was enough to establish a neighborhood ESOL for us. The ESOL had a lot of layer. It would be bigger than the ones at Schreiber and Sunfire. Doing so will save significant money and busing costs that have never been discussed. We just learned last weekend that another site closed, was the site council asked the district to center this to Pinkney because it was a community, more of a community school because Deerfield was proud, and the boundary committee members have this pointed out repeatedly over the past three weeks. Consider bringing those kids into Pinkney. It was just as close as Deerfield, and the route today means that. And now, if you ask those parents to either get on I-78, take your kids to Riverwood, which would drive a car on the freeway path through Pinkney neighborhood, right by our school, take them over to the Riverwood line. It makes more sense to send them to the most rural school over the Riverwood line, but first that is kids crossing the river, which was justified and protected from the water. Pinkney schools need, and it has a financial control, diversity, and walking distance, and it has the tunnel that makes the connection. You are riveting to things that makes Lawrence a key, like people in Lawrence for the sense of community. I'm keeping all of the, I am for keeping all of the TruMe and other schools, so no person is not in a restricted school. I'm sure your residents have already been made. You were late to put the work in and figure out what was best for the kids who are most likely to slip into tracks. It's hard to remember, you're not even that the school board is just taking favors in the school closing parts. School closing is forgotten. Don't make history my closing schools, make history by taking a stand when it was right.
Adrianne, next, Adrianne. Adrianne, and then Sharon Marius, and then like Austin.
Hi. I'm Amy, a licensed architect, and I have a master's degree in historic preservation from Columbia University. Also, a proud Pinkney parent of two children. I submitted a preliminary site information questionnaire to PSIQ towards State Historic Preservation Office or SHIP though. And they have been Pinkney school eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places in the criteria A as insignificant as a school. It did not qualify on the criterion C, architecture, because of many alterations of the building impacted architectural integrity. Pinkney is historically significant as an ageist neighborhood elementary since 1331. It's also in significance to Black history in Lawrence, Kansas, and possibly the country as a whole. In 1942, several African-American members of the community of Pinkney parents signed a letter in protest to the Board of Education, planned to segregate the community and force their children to attend Lincoln School in North Lawrence. Groundness to the Board of Education was not until 1954, so these families and community members had no protection or promise that when they protested segregation of Pinkney they would win. Further information from the Lawrence Douglas County African-American oral history interviews indicates possible involvement of Reverend Al Brown of Brownhurst Board Education. He would often exchange pulpits and possibly inspire the churchgoers of St. Luke AME to defer the protest, or maybe even vice versa. The protests were successful and Pinkney School were made integrated. If Pinkney remains operating as a school and is listed on the National Register, it would join only three other elementary schools in Kansas with this status. It will also be the only one in the state of Kansas to be listed with significance relating to Black history. Closing the school raises this history. It destroys this opportunity. I brought the 1942 letter copy of it signed by brave community members and school members. This is science. This narrative is gone. I started a petition and have over 550 signatures in favor of keeping the school open and listing it on the National Register. Historic buildings are part of a curated landscape which tells the narrative of our community. USC 497 is your chance to shine, to celebrate history, diversity, and education. Keep historic Pinkney Elementary a neighborhood school, serving a diversity and equality that has lasted maybe two years.
Thank you. Okay. I wanted to let the folks know who they're dating, that you wish, I don't see their actual, I see they're right here in Missouri. I have, Sharon Marius, you're next, and then like Austin, and then after, Sharon Marius.
I have Sharon Marius, or Mrs. T, as the Pinkney community calls me. Our district has often used the phrase, "What's best for kids." I do not think closing neighborhood schools is what's best for kids. As a matter of fact, closing schools is not what's best for any student or teacher in our district. In the past few years, USC 497 has spent time and money training teachers on how they help students who have experienced trauma. I didn't think the district would turn around and impose a traumatic experience for these same children that they wanted us to help. Schools are supposed to be safe, stable places. Our students are already fearing the transition of going to a different school where they don't know anyone, and for some, this is very traumatizing. Pinkney is more than numbers on spreadsheets. It is about Aaron, Abby, Abel, Achilles, Addie, Aaron, Abby, Abby, Akina, Al, Alistair, Amelia, Amelia, Amina, Amir, Andre, Ansel, Ariana, Arlo, Asher, Asher, Adalia, Aubrey, Arla, Aviana, Bella, Vind, Vind, Bishop, Blake, Bobby, Brody, Bruce, Renly, C, Cambria, Camille, Cash, Cassie, Charlie, Charlotte, Charlotte, Claire, Clarence, Cora, Corbin, Dallas, Dean, Demarion, Demetrius, Devon, Dustin, Eden, Edgar, Edward, Elena, Elijah, Ellen, Emilio, Emma, Enid, Erica, Felix, Finn, Finn, Francesca, Gigi, Gio, Graham, Grayson, Gunner, Harley, Hazel, Hazel, Henry, Hunter, Hunter, Ian, Ida, Amari, Amila, Ingrid, Isaac, Aviana, Jace, Jack, Jack, Jackie, Jackson, Corbin, Jamie, Jasper, Jackson, Jeremiah, Jesse, Jonathan, Joseph, Joyceanne, Juan, Jude, Julia, Juniper, Kai, Callie, Kamia, Kavian, Hason, Kieron, Keith, Kinsley, Kevin, Candice, Kobe, Kai, Kyrie. Libiana, Lisa, Lorenzo, Luella, Maddox, Maribel, Mary, Maddox, Matt, Maya, Melody, Akaya, Nina, Naomi, Natalie, Nico, Noah, Nolan, Noah, Oakley, Oliver, 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 Oliver.
Thank you, Sherri.
Thank you.
That says Rebecca Aston, and you're in the day of the Venus.
Hi, Rebecca Aston.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Aston. I'm a Pinky parent for Barbara Rata, whose name I just heard.
Hi, Rebecca Aston.
I'm a Pinky parent for Barbara Rata, whose name I just heard. It's a first name of Pinky.
I didn't move to neighborhood because of elementary schools. I wasn't married yet. I didn't think about it. I didn't know about neighborhood schools. And I'm not going to stand here and say you have to keep neighborhood schools. I'm not going to say you can never close schools. But if you're going to close schools, take the time to work through thinking about all the other options first, and take appropriate time to ensure that the closure will undoubtedly, absolutely bring more benefit than cost. I don't think that's the case to return, because of closing Pinky Elementary. The benefits would be saving three hundred thousand dollars, from what we've seen. The costs are many, and I'm not going to be able to cover them all in a day, and I don't know all of them, and I don't know that anybody else does. But I think we're going to see an increase in occupancy referrals when we have kids that don't live close to school and their parents don't have transportation, and those occupancy referrals go to D C F. And that means kids being homeless in their homes and more trauma than what we're imposing by closing their parents' schools. You know, equity overall, I'm really, really concerned about Pinkney, especially as such a high poverty school. I know it's sixty-five percent free and reduced. I think it's fifty percent free, which is under a hundred and thirty percent of the average federal poverty level. I mean, Pinky is one of the most diverse student bodies. It is about twenty-nine percent white, fifty-one percent non-white. So closing a school like Pinkney is not an equitable choice. I don't know in any circumstance, but other risks, I mean, the safety risks of having the high need kids cross McDonald's Drive where other people have already testified there's not a sidewalk at that corner. That's a really busy corner. You've got people rushing to the interstate to get to work at Topeka. Like, I, I just, I'm so concerned about the safety of those kids. And it's not my thing that I'm here about. I'm about, I'm here about the two hundred and twelve kids at Pinkney that I don't think everything is really considered. I mean, just the trauma of rooting, disroducting kids who come from backgrounds with a history of marginalization. I, it's, it doesn't make sense to me. My notes are not in order. You know, there was a letter to the editor, I think it was in the paper today, and I was on the Equity Advisory Committee, and I talked about my concerns about equity not being considered. The advisory committee was not consulted. It seemed like the future planning committee didn't look at equity until the very last minute. When I see the slide that says Pinkney must be closed, but I know that no one ever said Pinkney must be closed. They said elementary schools must be closed. And so, like, that's misleading to me, and I feel like the transparency is missing here. And I just want everybody to really think about the kids that are going to be affected. Thank you.
Okay, our next, Oliver Hardner. Bertha, and then Jamie Pitts, and then Jamie.
Hi, all the evening prepared remarks from Mary Rowley, who came up with the day. My name is Mary Rowley, and I am current Pinky P T O president. I'm very disappointed with the short notice of this hearing, but not only enough time to give other meetings due time. And I can only assume that holds true for others. However, many of the people who are being here from our type of people easily capable of giving speeches in a situation like this anyway. Those of us who are able to have done our best to tell you they exist and to convey their stories that we have been written off as privileged and inhumans and our concerns are validated. We were able to speak at the administration hall of our principals to make certain there would be no collection of stories of these invisible families on school property. But today I would like to ask, why are we here again one year later? Why do these planned closed schools feel like not college students, grandparents, family, in an all-nighter to get a bad list or be returned in at the last minute? All year we were focused on the future failing committee process, but this process is to be logged. Firstly, you cannot insist that the committee was in favor of closing these schools, and they didn't know what ones they were voting for. Secondly, you can't make schools one of those drop first going through boundary assessment. Thirdly, you cannot prioritize building condition while completely ignoring location. But most importantly, you cannot ignore the exceptional situations of the people inside this building. Sixty-five percent of Pinky children receive free lunches lunches. Over half of Pinky students are children of color. Over eighty students receive Title One services, almost all of whom will be headed to a non-title designated school next year. I am also at the loss of a different house to pay the Pinky's special school. The children here cost more to educate than they had to work with it, and they will always cost more no matter where they assign them. In fact, over the last even more than four years of this destruction, we've broken saving money in the process of this process. Thank you.
Next, Jamie Pitts, and Jamie Pitts.
I'm sorry, I'm saying that I get it. We are the last big district in the state trying to maintain small neighborhood schools in face of funding realities, and it is a challenge. I saw it all on the consolidation task force over a decade ago. And because we were allowed to follow that data wherever it led us, without any handed manipulation whatsoever, half of that group had prepared recommendations to revamp the E S O program to enable the closure of Hill Press and in urging the Kennedy representatives, suggesting a new construction of the site consolidating school working Kennedy with the authority of New York. We understood the problem, and we approached repair and problems to minimize the impact of those old walls. Things now would be far less dire at the Board of Time and Force. Yet now this board is doubling down on original estate making the district's most vulnerable students pay for the bad decisions made in the past. And so on Monday, we're going to be told we need to review the process to counter anti-tire. This is the only way. It's not, your things are not tire. You have a chance for a review. It changes this way to the school funding mechanism that will soon be law, means significant resources will be available next year. The district did not have these qualifications. It's not enough to keep all these students, but it is enough to keep buildings open that best serve the district and its most vulnerable students long-term while refinancing all the district's assets on the school. You mentioned the hard numbers. Yet we don't actually know them, because for seven years, the rest of the board had been consistently arbitrary about allowances and abandonations. When it was voluntary, they managed to break it out of the past and try to come a little down. You still want their requests to those numbers of people running out of the clock and substituting the inclusion of people in the end. They will have the resources to extend this process another year and subject other schools to this magnitude. The problem is you know there's a difference in how the E S O program at Hill Press is done versus the neighborhood school programs. Children are assigning E S O locations based on geography alone, so the program should have disparities. And if the neighborhood E S O programs are run sane and still have the same initial outcomes as they did ten years ago, why is the district spending several hundred thousand dollars crossing away from the neighborhood school system to maintain Hill Press? Why is the board most geographically constrained, school-armed, and one that in the last twenty years has never been able to stay consistently about twenty students, despite its advent to it from two other school closures and an extra boundary change, not facing the same closure questions? Two years ago, the decision to close Kennedy was strong on the last minute, and only later, when we got to see the data, we had to see that by all the ventures to prevent Kennedy, horribly fair and much worse, but that didn't come from the law. You want these people to believe this process is fair and impartial and following the data? Now these short chains can prove it. With these new extra dollars coming, you have no excuse not to. And if you don't, when you come back to the people of the district in five years and begging for money to build additional capacity on the edges of town, because you no longer can shift anything back to the board, they'll remember you got a chance to avoid this wall, and they'll remember that we're still paying the buildings we're proposing. And they're going to stand up.
Next is Jamie Pitts, and then Oliver Pinky.
I'm Jamie Pitts, and I live in the life of the seventies and my only child is a second grader at Deerfield. If we go to close Pinkney and go to improve the proposed boundary changes, the majority of these Pinky kids will live in Deerfield, and fifty Deerfield kids will live reassign. Out of those fifty kids, thirty of those that live in the northwest suburbs will live reassigned to Woodlawn, a school that is four to five miles away compared to one mile from the commute to Deerfield, Alabama, and half. Mr. Gordon Ross said that four of the fifth grade students who have one or two siblings have been raised, that have been raised by the school without the option of which school they want to attend. And those students would have automatically been given for a treatment cert. While students who are guarded from fit, siblings without siblings do not get that same privilege. Now, out of those thirty kids that are going to be raised up, the majority of them will be shooting to stay at Deerfield, and over half of them will get automatic approvals because they have siblings, they have been promoted to fifth graders for the siblings. And out of those thirty kids, there are three second grade girls, and one of those, out of those three girls, two of them get to stay at Deerfield, but one, my daughter, must go to Woodlawn because she doesn't have a little sister. So she'll go to Woodlawn with no, not one of her friends from Deerfield or from the neighborhood. As you can imagine, this would be detrimental to her mental health, getting her anxiety and depression from going to a school not only not only single, but not having any friends and potentially energy, any added progress that's been against security. Additionally, as a school mom, I lose my school system. I don't no longer address the neighbors or kids at the same school that helped pick up the drop off when I work here or leave or have to stay late. But that being said, I just have a few, few questions for your board. Shannon, in twenty fifteen, you said as your board member, I have and will continue to constantly strive to put the best interests of our students first. Is that still true? Is closing Pinky the best interest of our students? And Erica, in twenty nineteen, you said your vision was for all students to have a sensible home. They know that they call parents responsible. Does removing students from established schools and family then other schools get corners of the home? Okay, your P P P website says our teachers, students, staff deserve better. U S D four ninety-seven can do better. Is this doing better?
All right, our next speaker is Serena Miller, Jamie Pitts, and Jamie Pitts.
Good afternoon. The proposed school closure of Pinky Elementary will become emotional, stressful, and mindful for the community. In the days that you have to this hearing, I can't remember how to find where all the data finds to consider adding and input school workers. It's that remarkable beginning of the fall. Can't imagine that elementary schools feel. Closing a new school has decades of history for the Lawrence community. I never thought as a parent that I would feel displaced by the world of history considering the needs of my children to have a stable education. By stable, I mean having a school system that one would be looking to. But I'm not even teachers who have passed the credence trust to adults and knowing that they're not removed more than once in their educational career to improve building for the new staff, new classmates, and new expectations. Personally, I worry about how children may place in classes with thirty plus students. Due to staff layoffs last year, my fourth grader, who was used to be here, is now on the third special education placement. She also missed out on special education services and postices at school. It bothers me to tell you. Why? Because staff was cut, income increased, and the structures were stretched so thin they had to do without payrolls. This is not for the students. More the teachers who are as thoughtful for their social, emotional, and academic growth. I can't imagine with a school like that shipping students around to other places that would cause numbers to decrease. Professionally, I worry about the teachers in this district. I am currently a primary school special education teacher at a school in Topeka. I can't imagine what I'd like to do with a town like this. How would I teach knowing I might have to do new building? Possibly not have a job at all to be established reductions, as well as school builders. Socially, I worry about what's supposed to be to the community around me. Families that are blind, dysphoric, and community school will not be fixed with the entrance only to a school farther away from home. And what about the students who will have to walk or ride their bikes to school? How would they safely leave to school now that they have a longer route? I understand how that happens needs to be made. However, looking at other options is necessary. So it does not disrupt educational life of the students. To me, that seems priceless. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and to the board's take into consideration what this means for the students. We don't have a choice in this situation, but it will be impacted the most.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the silent thoughts. Thank you. Next is Katie Hope. Katie Hope. Thank you. And then Kate Johnson and Kay Arner.
Hi, good afternoon. Always speaking of all. Always speaking of all, but we're done. You're in a terrible position. We're in a terrible position. Sorry, that's all. You're in a terrible position. We're in a terrible position. A closing school? Destroying? For four hundred thousand dollars, it's it's just a waste. Have people learned their job? Have you gone to every funding source? I don't think you understand. And at this point, everybody here feels this way. The key word for me is to say, no. Leave out the huge incentive. What concern about our students? How, how do the students from far edges of Pinky get to Deerfield? How do they travel? Yes, it's within the two point five hours. Are they going to walk down Sixth Street? How do they do that? There are so many questions that haven't been answered. What about our staff? I know the staff has said they're not agree with this, but they're terrified to speak up. When I talked to multiple, multiple staff members, they said, I don't agree with this. I don't want to hire a force load for a minor raise, but I can't say anything because I'm worried about my position. Where are the staff going to go? What about the students that need forceful? What about the students that have to now cross Ninth Street to go to Hill Press? None of you are allowed on Ninth Street up that hill. It's horrible. It's terrifying. What if the students hit and fall by a car? Because now they're forced across major intersections. Their city frankly wasn't designed to handle. And because our purpose of the city was designed for small community schools. I understand your face about global weather crisis. We didn't create, we're all human. And if you know it's voted on a statewide, well, it's created by that pandemic crisis. And there's hardly another solution. All year, the goal's more has been quota and cuts. And I want to challenge you today to say, what if the goal is growth and stability? It's really hard to make that happen, but it's really easy to set a new goal. E L or Swissmer, you're still taking the goal. I'm going to be good. It's a very hard challenge to do. I want to say, kill this time, let's move on to growth and stability. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kate Johnson, and then Kay Arner, and Talia Plasoff.
Hi, Amy. My name is Kate Johnson. I'm a teacher here at Pinky Elementary. I'm a P T A teacher. This morning, when I sat down right after I had stayed here today, my son asked what I was doing. He also happens to be kindergarten here at Pinky. He said, just tell them we're really important school and need to stay open because we support a lot of kids who have a lot of needs, and we give them a lot of A D. I said, oh, hi, Dad. He gets it. He turns to face the library. He had a birthday party invited everyone in his class. He used several kids who wouldn't be able to come because women arrived. He knew other women come because they feel obligated for a gift, but couldn't afford them. So he had to So he had to include all the invitations, no gifts. He understands what basis to recall for many of his students to show up. But to you? As seen one of the 24 kids, of our kids, consistently crossed Iowa during the Mississippi border commute, met at the intersection of the ESC with no obvious traffic, showed a full lack of understanding of who our kids are and where they come from, assuming that we pass by a new path for those experiencing homelessness on road machine, which translates to inherent safety risks for our most vulnerable students. Many enough get themselves up in the morning, get themselves ready, then walk or ride their bikes to their neighborhood school. No matter what, in the winter, it's often still dark for their being, and freezing. And of course, the three women are still lying on the ground. But don't worry, our very vulnerable citizens here, paying for the kind of funds because they need a kind of tool, make sure they all have pillows, blankets, socks, and shoes through the whole room. It's a shame, though, for this person to work, don't say wrong to the front doors of their new school. They'll also leave their not prepared support for a lead expert, best served by teachers here at Pinky. At the beginning of this school year, in our 11 years of teaching, we talked about test scores, how we raise them and by what margin or percentage we could be believed to have. I imagine Deerfield getting their names down the drain during next year, while they wrestle with trying to improve their test scores with guaranteed reading classroom and to give them less than 40 per hour now there, these students. Still, other students will be asked to cross 58th and 9th Streets to make their way to rest. Unaccompanied, they may miss an incident because of circumstances involving a harmful dog by 6 or 7 o'clock. Without sending a school visiting, without cutting the initial plan, I am asked to pull because of contract needed. The saving being reported will not be realized. Closing two events will displace the hundreds of students producing services out of the city and create significant transportation issues for our families. Will not help for senior grade teachers. This is not an equalized situation. And what it will be to realize this will be after closing Broken Arrow in Pinky. I heard this song recently from the musical, Right? You know it, 5,000, 5,600 minutes that we measure a year? And if I'm getting about 1,000 minutes a year? And I'd like you to consider this now. How many can you measure us a year? 1,116 hours? 66,960 minutes? And many of the dollars is therapy and saving and buckets and solos, and you're the worst.
Next is K R Miller, and Tabitha Passa, and Ann Martin.
Hi, I'm K R Miller. I'm here to talk about the struggles of our other schools. I grow in Denver, California, and I have a master's degree in psychology. You might be wondering why my teachers did that, and it's true, I was born with a significant fear of other teachers. Now, I hope to be focused on your language. I'm here to discuss the need for the creation of closing on new schools. I want to minimize the problem, the solution, the resources. These students of other schools are ridiculous. But closing them down would be dramatic to children, problematic to families. They more likely to teach with, with deleterious harm to the community. I think you can get right to what I can say, because I believe that we all are different within, except for the ones that are in major schools. The problematic Senate bill on immigration is about managing out schools. I'm in favor of school choice, but not school voucher for closing them down. School vouchers and price card. Vouchers have allowed providers to provide assistance, providing large amounts of public funding. But now, from 2018, the Oregon Department of Public Health reported that the Oregon voucher program lost 700,000 dollars of tax revenue. And in 2022, the Oklahoma-wide county area definition together 5,000 of the state algebraic bases with this standard. School vouchers are directed at our other education program. The workforce, the Senate bill can create a gig, poverty, and poverty. Our community is really affected by school closure. Living as an education for an increased attrition, we don't want community problems. Desperate people, we thought desperate people. Our community issues will become handful, modern health issue, addiction, violence, homelessness, legal issue, and the increase in poverty. This will result with our town becoming an uncrucial backwater. Making education accessible at a one regard as a ready general origin, this will really need to educate the property, more steel workers, higher property value, and more steel pickings, past pickings. Our values told by the bedwars of our community, that it is to pay them and find us that the good solution and cooperation. We will solve this directly with this, with the moving hall, I don't have that account, a book called Holy Society. Third, a holy shame, including students, teachers, parents, administrators, to 12,000 members. As Senator Paul Ralph Stone once said, we are all, we all are better than we all despair. Today, I identify the danger of both our schools, the benefit of keeping them open, and the reason. All of us have this solution. You are more powerful than you realize. You need to keep well in this test. If it's not you, then who? We have not learned, and then, then who?
Next is Tabitha Passa, and Ann Martin, please.
Hi, my name is Tabitha Passa, I've been teaching at Pinky for the last two years. The August before my first year as teaching at Pinky, we were doing a scavenger hunt to find certain local homes or neighborhoods. I was fortunate enough to team up with a vet's teacher who took me to a real people neighborhood, so that I was better able to understand and hear myself and truth of who would be in my classroom, deceives, how some of our families live, so that I did not misunderstand the truth into my students. These neighborhoods were all within walking distance of Pinky and 6th Street. By closing Pinky, we are entering this ability to keep within walking distance for a lot of our families. Some of our schools do not have a running vehicle. So when our students aren't available or other schools, and there is nothing available, but something happens and those students need to be picked up, what happens? Do we have a plan for those students who have to come home? When mom or dad or some other guardian can't pick them up because there is some unbelievable? On February 27th, I report the, there were three people who spoke to have Pinky, out of the many anymore, who spoke to Woodland, Woodland area. This is the exact representation of how, how our families cannot, how so many more are just can't. Our families are devastated by the loss of losing a foster in their lives and their students' lives, but they could come to that building because of work, travel, means, or having a child. If you weren't to come to a Friday market, and there was to have every Friday, you would see that our families are involved with their students and with our school. Because they're so close to home, or so close to work, or are able to meet it. Almost always, they're within walking distance. We were asked to look at our marginalized students for a daily question, during one of our building provisions committees, which I totally studied. But mine and all of those students in our building are not marginalized. The district was a mission of Pinky's advocacy, with equity. So in a building that's being labeled marginalized in a society that's short and out of the minority, we have to close this school and push these students into a more marginalized situation and force those students to experience prejudices and biases they may not have experienced in class before. There are situations in other schools where they have experienced traumas, named and unnamed. If those students are only built to different abilities with people who have never had that many experiences, their own or other voice, or any training, is differently metedory, trauma, and wrong training. How is the district willing to pair these staff members and other buildings to properly and effectively help, and encourage students? What steps does the district have in place to plan or have planned for the students to succeed in life and in that goodness? There are things that need to be looked at, and we'll post it through the educators, which as teachers, we're constantly being able to look at. I just want to say that when Ms. Parents was up here and she was reading those names, we're not very nice, I knew exactly who she was talking about. And I break my heart because I know all of those students. Only been here for two years, and they need so much of all of us. We support them in ways that other schools might not be able to.
Next is Ann Martin, then Tiffany Easley, and Ann Martin.
My name is Ann Martin, I live in the city of Hollywood, California. My two boys have been in the community of these, and they're in this council. And I first want to say that I have three young families that live within a quarter block of my house, with kids younger than six. I also want to say that if you have a good day's paper, you really should be the front. Can't page eight, who's paid. The progression, the focus of this was the forecast is 24 children decrease over the next five years. And I'm sure you know that, I had to dig way in to find that. Uh, renovation here, I think, was less than 10 years ago, it was like in 2016, I think. This was no, oh, of course, I agree with your opinion, said before. With the renovation, they updated, they updated the food pantry, showers, and laundry for disadvantaged communities. And the school is a social safety net for our local, very stressed population. The disadvantaged will lose real need and neighboring support. I recognize the school board and city dollars are separate. However, the acts of the school board that oppose these schools are in direct conflict with non-housed population and community input, as well as with disadvantaged population and community input. The school board, the city, and the county should be working together toward the same goal with respect to the disadvantaged community. Not in the form of swimming pools. The dollars and cents in buildings versus the community and social benefits serve no sense in the long term. Closing this school will impact our property values. Why would young families want to move to this neighborhood only to have their kids cross McDonald Drive into school? PNA is for, the neighborhood association is for, the schools have westward overcrowded. What's gonna happen in the near future with that situation? Are we gonna build another school or raise taxes for everybody to store that school? Instead of shifting students west to these schools, why not shift them east? Where they can experience more diversity and smaller classroom sizes. Thank you for listening, hon, and thanks to Tiffany Easley.
Thank you. Um, Tiffany Easley, my name is.
I'm sure, I got a, I got a phone. All right. Uh, I'm Tiffany Easley, um, I was the librarian for six years. Um, we are all gathered here today for what is a very traumatic formality, to check a box. We are here today to plead and cry if you change your mind about a plan that was unofficially set in stone over 365 days ago. A plan of war execution, a plan that only two days ago allowed families to see what happens if the board chooses to cut a lifeline. The elusive boundary map proposal that has some of our city's most vulnerable students and families crossing McDonald Drive. An intersection where I was hit by a semi that wasn't paying attention in my Toyota Corolla. Furthermore, an alternate route that crosses Rockledge on 6th Street proves dangerous as a Pinky student was critically injured after being struck by a car while riding their bicycle at that intersection in 2014. He was six years old at the time. These routes are among the many concerns that I have with Pinky students attending Deerfield as well as Oakcrest. For six years, I was the librarian at Pinky, I rarely saw board members making appearances. I understand that being a school board member is kind of like a side gig. It's an unpaid voluntary position that requires being elected by the community. I get that, I really do. What I don't get is how you can cast a vote drastically change students' lives without consistently showing your face in those places. You had to spend entire calendar year to show up in these communities. Before you repeat this, let me tell you that in regards to Pinky, the staff communicate, communicate with each other very well, and we would all know what should happen. And I'm sorry to inform you that a board breakfast, attending a half a morning opener, not making a heads of front office doesn't exactly count. The boundary map stated that 124 Pinky students will move to Deerfield. Moving 124 kids to Deerfield and instead those 124 kids will now lose access to the title services they currently receive. Not just academic interventions, but also a wrap therapist and a parent involvement facilitator. Two positions that anyone at Pinky will tell you are essential to the health and safety of students and their families, something that was clearly evident when this was happening. Pinky students thrive in spaces where they have access to valuable resources. Moving 124 students to Deerfield, a large school already further dilutes the resources available to them. Larger classrooms means less time to build relationships, relationships with vulnerable students. They will go from a school counselor responsible for 200 students to a school counselor responsible for more than double the amount of students. Adding the more diversity to one school by closing another isn't equitable access. It's continuing to throw gasoline on the fire already burning in a marginalized student's house, while he gets to pat ourselves on the back for making our houses more colorful.
Mike Doneye, and then you're listed, Ashley. Um, after the last scene I read, we were going to take a short recess. And then, okay, Haley.
Good afternoon. My name is Haley Brown. I reside at 810 West 8th Street at Lincoln Lawrence for 32 years. In 1996, I began working for USP 497 as a professional in training. With this in me, since we're teaching a marginalized college, R.A., Green, Sheldon, and many others, I returned to school and made teaching my profession. Completed my certification, followed by a master's in technology, and ultimately the fourth, for my doctoral dissertation. I was invested in this school. During my 15 years in the district, we had a very professional, three years at Co., and now you took Woodland. I treasured my opportunity to teach in Lawrence. At the time of that, I believed it was a privilege to be a teacher in Lawrence. Teacher wanted to teach here, it was a family. Giving an interview was a great thing, and it was a brilliant and admirable. The town was liberal, the district was supportive, and the holidays were amazing. I treasured it. Why? Then did all this change? If you truly do have teachers and students first, I have to ask why? Why do you wish to function independently of this town? Schools at the core of neighborhoods, Pinky, Broken Arrow, Lexington, Hughes, Brooklyn, and Belvedere. They are walkable, create a liberal and desirable neighborhood, where the youth have classmates as neighbors, and their parents can rely on other parents as well. They assist in keeping all parts of Lawrence throughout every community of generations. Why are teachers leaving? Is it just salary, or is it morale and work? Why do you give more money to the grounds that have a grade of workload for larger classes? I have a class of 31 6th graders, no amount of money to compensate for the abundant hours I've worked in the evenings, the time away from my personal life, and the cost of my income. Why do the chosen schools not directly impact the future of children? Why would you choose to close schools, notify staff and parents, and stay the plane in the repurposing of the schools, but not the plane to the schools it would intend? A plane was to cut the repurposing of Pinky before there was consensus on holding care, without the changes to even the thought of transportation. USP 497 is not located in a world-class community, but Nevada University Town, the priest, professors, instructor, teachers, abundant businesses, striving to help families, kids, and residents of the world. Yet despite these opportunities, USP 497 fails to be financially responsible to transarian. Each district must pay teachers, each district must be financially responsible to transarian, each district must pay. As a former teacher, resident, and active part of the Lawrence community, I'm not sure why you don't have students and teachers first right now. I do know you will have them first on Monday night when you vote to keep Pinky and Broken Arrow open.
Ashley.
Um, my name is Ashlyn, I'm a doctor, my mom and I are students, both our boys are administrators at Pinky and its class, and she has changed their lives. I can tell you that equity lives, I know perfectly, equity lives here. Um, Dr. Rose, you mentioned the ends and the loss, and that's absolutely what we're seeing here. You know, our kids are experiencing so much loss and grief already. Um, I see that on a daily basis. Patients always tell me that it needed more time. Um, and that's what we have to do. You know, I'm caring for my patients, I get a lot of secondary trauma from them, but I also feel a lot of joy because I can see the way that they're experiencing their lives. Last call, my husband started to go, he's been drinking, and I immediately started thinking of a way to back him up. We finally arrived, we found a diagnosis of probably multiple strokes. We went from our normal daily routine of passing off between this night shift and the emergency department, and me dropping kids off and going to work at this place. We went from that to dropping broken off here, knowing that he was going to be loved and cared for. He was going to get the tools that he needed, the supports he needed to succeed here. I knew he was safe. And then I took my.
And then I took my husband to the hospital, and we were trying to fight it through another steroid treatment. That week was the worst of my life. But I needed her because of the pride of here, because of the love that made me here. When I asked my son, "Norm, would you like for me to share with you?" He got very bashful. He said, "I don't, I don't know." And then he said, "Well, I'm with Pinky. It's the perfect student for Rowan, and that I love Pinky." Since I still have some more time, I'll share a couple of other fun things that he could share with me, other comments he shared with me over the school year. When they returned to lunch, and students had to pay for lunch, which they didn't have to do last year, Rowan was very upset. Children should not have to pay for food. I mean, food breaks, we all heard of that. He also told me he had very awkward conversations about homelessness, and wanted to like to experience that. And because of his experience and his love and relationship for his classmates here, he's able to empathize with other members of the community. And then finally, I'd like to say that Rowan and Ellen came from the same pre-K experience here. They have the same preparation to succeed in here. And it's been a journey. But like, they had a reason to us to teach here a couple months ago, and they were playing a drum and a guitar band, and all that material that they were. And that's truly what I feel about that.
Okay, we did have about 21 missing members, so they were ready for a meal return. We missed their last three to five minutes.
Okay, we are going to resume. I'm going to carry it this time. I need someone to call the senior up here. What's your comment? Keith Payne, Anna Faradis, and Laura Chorano. Then our next three hours will be Patrick Molan, Sarah Rosson, and Nancy. I apologize for the sorry.
Hi, Patrick Molan. My father was a volunteer company manager in Blackwell. And another time, he got promoted. He got sent to the entire campus. And at the 12th, I ended up in first community school. That's when I graduated. And I know that's different from those kind of explosions. But it's children's company, not together. And I always tend to be just a girl, together, with the class, together. And I tend to be the queen, my own side of the room. Now I am an educator, my resident in Lawrence. I have no children, but still, eventually, I'm coming to Lawrence School. I do hope I will take action to support us, which is an unhappy initiative, about leaving public education in the neighborhood of school. But the problem survives. It doesn't matter how the goal to solve this problem is defined. In this case, it seems that the problem is defined, that we don't have a solution. And if the potential solutions revolve around the discipline of law, closing schools becomes one of the options. If instead, the goal to find is supporting and preserving neighborhood schools so that our students can learn and grow, face the challenge, the question becomes, how can we achieve this? The shift from having money in the center of decision to having children in the center of decision is being able to serve as a means or a form of help.
Next is Sarah Rosson, and then it is Steve Cody. Now, Steve is Patrick Drew.
Hi, my name is Sarah Rosson. I'm a professor at Sheever. I work here at the community for the last ten years. I tend to do this with the strike, but there is one still at Lawrence. Really, I haven't checked them out. I think I've been there in the past, but some of the things I've been thinking about. First of all, I want to take a travel briefing tomorrow that I've heard about. So Steve, go ahead. As one of the causes I have to be here today, and the person who speaks here, I have parents watching and saying, "We're not the parents of..." They've done surveys and showed strategies. And we worry that just as much about our kids, why do you love school? Pinky Panthers, they were really well with big guy and much too... You know, my kids are not alone in the struggles. So I guess in the past, I understand what it's like to have them. I have people who are, come to the Boston Panthers, whatever. My concerns are, do you know what actual dollar amount saving is for from the previous explosions and injuries? Do you actually, do they match up projections? Like those numbers, you know, that's kind of expensive. The kind of the KFCs, or the McDonald's, or whatever. Pressure for, maybe, launches to build a home office or anything like that. And process savings, full quarter, there's a pressure to sound, giving a principal or a assistant, somebody of all those things. I was a little concerned because the present demands, to look at, we have boys and close to six hundred kids, that's a little bit of a struggle. So if you do it in the middle of school, that kind of, if that, the principal was successful, you know, other counselors and instructors in place. So I'm worried about the ability to respond for kids that are having difficult time in their, getting involved. I keep saying, "I'll respond to that." So I don't think I'll ever, I don't think it's time. I don't think we'll have access to more than that. I'm trying to keep it short. And so, this is only for me, that supports this media and being here every day. I don't think it's, I got a message from the chairman of the bill. And so when he was lying, he was still, he said, "I don't know." And I can't, I can't say so much to him. I almost didn't, I don't understand. This is why I'm sorry. This is, I mean, this is what kids are thinking. I was feeling, sometimes I was feeling, this is what I ask. It's just, it's a, it also, that, 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 me, and, 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 I'm happy to offer thanks, but just personally, especially the institution, we want to do something that has to happen. And so I just hope you see how we're going to see how it's happening. Plus, I would want to, I would say, most of the cases are, are, that, that was pushed, that, 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 so, but I don't know, see, we can go. So, I just, sorry. Patrick, Steve.
Steve Cody, and then Topher Enking, and Patrick Drew.
Hello. My name is Steve Cody. I suspect we're, everyone back here is kind of wondering the same thing. Why are we here? I love, you know, you look up the breakdown numbers, the expenditures of the year. Two thirty, two hundred and thirty-one million, give or take. We're, we're here spending all this time fighting for the survival of two schools, which I do in a second, over less than a third of a percent of the overall expenditures of this district. Why are we spinning our wheels, wasting so much time over this? It's mind blowing. But at the same time, we, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna cut where you wanna cut. But we don't know what your long-term vision is. No one's ever shared that with people back here. We don't know. You know, you wanna close schools? Okay. But, but why? Compel us. Tell us the story. Explain it to us. Don't put us through different shenanigans. Took the course of a year, two years, and, you know, drag us through this process for less than a third of a percent of the annual revenue. Does that make sense to you? Aye, if one time, two, three.
Okay, I'm sorry. I can't allow it because you have to be some love.
She was.
But she already, you already made your call, so if you'd like to finish up your time, thank you.
Okay. All right, parents here. Let's see, is there anything else that like school board members know? Well, I gotta read this. "This school has helped many families like myself. My son went here for two years and is now a veteran." And his sister is now here. So, closing this school would be very stressful for a single mother like myself. Obviously, that's me. Let's see what else we have here. Is there nothing? Oh, that way. "This school has helped many families..." Yeah, here's a, same one. Yeah, that's the other way. "My son has problems with change. My oldest has been going here for so long, and this school has been the best pick. This is his third school." Who's not here today? Think about them.
Thank you. Okay, Topher Enking, and then Patrick Drew, and Amy Warrior.
"People of Earth, your attention please," a voice said, and it was wonderful. Wonderful, perfect quadraphonic sound with distortion levels so low as to make a brave man weak. "This is prosthetic vogon jelt of the galactic hyperspace planet council," the voice continued. "As you will no doubt be aware, the plans for development of the outlying regions of the galaxy require the building of a hyperspatial express route through your star system, and regrettably, your planet is one of those scheduled for demolition. The process will take slightly less than two of your Earth minutes." Thank you. The P A died away. Uncomprehending terror settled on the watching people of Earth. The terror moved slowly through the gathering crowds, as if they were iron filings on a sheet of board, and a magnet was moving beneath them. Panic sprouted again, desperate fleeing panic, but there was nowhere to flee to. Observing this, the Vogons turned on their P A again. It said, "There's no point in acting all surprised about it. All the planning charts and demolition orders have been on display in your local planning department in Alpha Centauri for fifty of your Earth years. So you had plenty of time to lodge any form of complaint, and it's far too late to start making a fuss about it now." The P A fell silent again, and its echo drifted across the land. The huge ships turned slowly in the sky with easy power. On the underside of each hatchway opened an empty black square. By this time, somebody somewhere must have manned a radio transmitter, located a wavelength, and broadcast the message back to the Vogon ships to plead on behalf of the planet. Nobody ever heard what they said. They only heard the reply. The P A slammed back into life again. The voice was annoyed. It said, "What do you mean you've never been to Alpha Centauri? For heaven's sakes, man-time, it's only four light-years away, you know? I'm sorry, but if you can't be bothered to take an interest in local affairs, that's your own lookout. Energize the demolition beam." Light poured out of the hatchways. "I don't know," said the P A. "Apathetic, bloody planet. I've no sympathy at all." It cut off. There was a terrible gas inside us. There was a terrible gas in the nose. There was a terrible gas inside us. The Vogon constructor fleet coasted away into the Inky-starring void. On Monday, if you have a chance to read that story, you're all satisfaction.
Thank you. All right, next time, Patrick Drew, and then Amy Warrior, and Molly Alexander.
We're checking to read, uh, tell us, have us. Uh, so, my name's Patrick Drew. I'm a parent of two Pinky Panthers. Pinky has been a wonderful school for our boys. They've dedicated teams to them, and the teachers are giving them wonderful education. Probably five years ago, we were welcomed to Pinky by Christie Hill, phenomenal principal, who was given the task of, migrated the team over from East Heights and recruited a lot of talent here, her lucky power. She made the process of us go through. Spent so much easier, along with so much of the team, within the school, for both of our kids and for individual help. Just wanted you to know that Pinky makes a difference, and a continued difference. There's a journal article that talks about how projections or tenants can change. There's housing growth coming, and it's, you know, a methodology that you did not even see. A lot of the people on the future planning committee didn't get access to it. So please rethink closing this school. It matters so much. And this is what I know, this community will continue to work with you into the future. If you just give it a chance, we can try and find the money, we can try and find solutions. Please don't close our walkable neighborhood school. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Warrior, and Molly Alexander, and Nancy.
Hello, I am Amy Warrior, and I was a Pinky parent in 2011 until 2016. Pinky, Pinky looks like most other elementary schools. It's a building whose staff will be hired to provide the best education to every student. Both Pinky's one disability provides more learning opportunities because of the unique needs of its population. A population that is over sixty-five percent, where you're going to slush, and over thirty percent non-white. Pinky's a space that add the pantry, shower, just washing machine, and dryer during its renovation, and run between the unique needs of the students. This is the place where the staff and the challenges are not just the students, but the families. They work together to remove barriers, to ensure students can attend school regularly and have basic needs met at home, so they can come to school when they're alone. Staffs and part of the school community have supported getting water, gas, and electricity turned on in students' houses, gas cards to give families necessary mobility, beds and home goods, and stock the pantry for families to maintain whatever family personal items are needed. I worry about the district's ability to reach Chinese students and if school is closed, getting to school being a major challenge for many families. Families who now are further away from school, which would make walking home impossible and possibly dangerous, without supervision and major intersections, whether the golden drive or Main Street. Those things without transportation will cut off this school, making it difficult for students to get the services and education they need. Pinky students will have less access to those who need a direct impact, counselor, therapist, principal, parent-involvement facilitator type of resources, because they're simply won't have as much time available with more students at a school and no additional staff. I understand the need to make things to be changed immediately for the district, but closing the school, both of Lawrence's most vulnerable students, isn't the way to go. Please do not continue digesting and racially, economically diversifying laws. Your decision about Pinky will make a lasting change to our students, our community, and Lawrence as a whole. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Molly Alexander, and then Nancy. Tamara, Tamara Gold.
Hello. Twice in the short time that my husband and I have been parents here at Pinky, my husband and I, and our two children, have been all in the Pinky neighborhood while I was in the Pinky school neighborhood, as high-speed chases were being done with Lawrence schools. Since that time, those incidents, there was a hit-and-run. A woman was hit by a car, car left, she had a broken leg, and ended up in hospital. There have been other accidents. Ole West Lawrence installed some, some safety compass, or, sorry, I'm trying to remember what it was called. Traffic calming measures is what I'm trying to say, that slowed the traffic in Ole West Lawrence and prevented a lot of those types of situations from occurring in our neighborhood. However, a lot of that traffic is coming straight off of the Golden Drive. Now, we do have safeguards for our kids, like suicide calming measures, but if this school goes away, that completely throws away those measures that have been in place, and now our children will be forced to cross, over to the, Garefield, across the Golden Drive, and across Main Street where traffic is very heavy. We are also in a situation, just as you're here at Pinky, where many third graders were bad at choosing Pinky. Basically, the week that school started, we had a situation where our teachers and administration were both scrambling, trying to figure out how they were going to make all of these kids fit in our school. We had amazing teachers, they did it. I wonder how moving that many kids, when we're already talking about moving one hundred and twenty-three children to Garefield, if that is the school that we're moving on to, how are they able, that's how you addition to the elementary school. Packing our students to a capacity will not allow for that type of flexibility. And then I want to close with a personal story. In 2019, just months before open check in our schools, ten-year-old Rosie Azaray was found dead in her home in Clinton, Illinois. That's my hometown. Rosie had a suicide after the severe bullying she received because she didn't look like the rest of the school. I thought nearly a year to the date, it was still her deputy killer, who was dead of suicide because she didn't look like the rest of, in this school. I don't see the commitment from our administration to prevent these types of stories from happening here. What I do know is that closing our most ethnically diverse schools is not the answer. Please allow parents to get involved, allow us to bring these innovative ideas to the table, because we need this school.
Next, Nancy, and then Tamara Gold, and Katie Oliver.
Hello, all three of my children attended Pinky Elementary. Having a neighborhood school that saved routes to school, had a very positive impact on their elementary school years and overall welfare, and being part of the community. I had to cross a busy street in order to get to my elementary school in a different town, and I wasn't about to head to my family, I'm lucky to be here. About eight or nine years ago, this administration planned to close Pinky. The community got involved, and just like we are today, demanding we do not do so. We made our reasons, reasons very clear. After deciding to keep Pinky open, you invested money in the renovation of Pinky Elementary. You've also invested quite a bit of money since then on athletic improvements to the high schools and the coaching staffs, the renovation of your district building. You have money. How you're managing that money, I think, is what's going into question here. I'm also a property taxpayer, as are many people here. Our property taxes have gone up quite a bit the last few years, a lot of that's going to our school district. And what we're seeing out of this administration here is a lack of transparency as to how these numbers are being calculated, a lack of inclusion in everyone in how to plan for the future, and a complete disregard for several neighborhoods and parts of our community. If I were to grade your performance, I'd probably fail. You've gotten some serious accounting to do and accountability for the community, for the taxpayers. Also, those of us who vote in these elections and know who we're voting for, pay attention to that, and spread the word. So you have a big decision ahead of you, but it's not just Monday. You've got some major work to do on trying to make this entire district inclusive of the community, and show this community its taxpayers and voters that you do care and that you are in it. Because right now, that's, that's been questioned.
Next is Tamara Gold, sorry, I'm going to start first.
Okay, everybody that's, I go by Pinky, that's a lot of the teachers and staff know me. These days, I do have my anxiety with this, and I'm not just standing here for myself. I am standing up here for my third grader, eight-year-old daughter. I want to actually ask the staff and parents who know my daughter, that, who's worked hard with my daughter. My daughter struggled since kindergarten with a lot of anxieties, and she's in a special education program. And without the staff helping, my daughter could see she would have fallen through the cracks like I did as a child. I grew up in Kansas City, and in that district, they failed me, because they didn't see that I needed the help, I needed that support. And when my daughter came here and kindergarten, she couldn't speak, really, she'd get overwhelmed. She was one of those kids who had so many frustrations, and it was hard for people to understand her, but they learned how. They specialized, they programmed just for my daughter here. And if one teacher can't help her, another can. She has that support throughout this whole building. And without that support, I am very worried about my daughter moving to a different school where she's not going to know anybody and have that support of the staff. And I also want to let you guys know that, it's very hard for me to talk about, but we were a homeless family here at Pinky. We were homeless for six months. And without the support of this staff, we probably would have failed. I had an opportunity to move back to Kansas City to live with my family, but one of the main reasons why I chose to stay here was so my daughter would fall through the cracks in the education and be able to become somebody. Because then she will know the support that she has, that she's taking. And it's a struggle for me, knowing that we stayed homeless so she could attend this school, because I didn't want to uproot her from this school to move her to another school where she would set her back drastically, where her learning would not be a priority anymore, because there is too many students, because there's not enough staff. And Pinky, with everybody supporting her, she has been succeeding. And if you take that away from her, just think about the other kids, just like my daughter, who will fall through the cracks because of this small school and the support that they are able to give us. And so, please, before you make that decision on my end, think about those other kids who have those anxieties beginning groups, and have anxieties where too much is just too much for them and they can't learn. And just think about the relationships these children build, the trust they build with these teachers and these staffs that help them.
Okay, next is Katie Oliver, and Eric Zuman, and Marcy Gassit.
Hello, my name is Katie Oliver, one of the president of Ole West Lawrence Association. I just wanted to address the community impact that Ole West Lawrence is seeing as a result of the community meeting. We just had our annual membership meeting this morning, and at that meeting, our members voted that they oppose this closing humanist. So the reason I opposed Ole West Lawrence seven years ago was because of the walkability of the school. My first exposure to Pinky was actually at some recital at KU. I volunteered and taught sex phone lessons to a student in his body. That was the first time I saw magic here. The faces, the people, it was something really special that I didn't have as much experience. So I think you consider that by shutting down a school, future families, future people like myself, my fiancee, who will just start a new one, who will send Ole West Lawrence, might not consider moving to this neighborhood or this community. And that impact cannot be avoided. You do not know what will happen like this in the school in the future. Thank you. Thank you.
Next is Eric Zuman and Marcy Assen.
Hello. My name is Eric Zuman. I'm a third grader parent of Pinkney, also a PTO director. Throughout this process, and tonight, we've heard a lot of the dual voices about the deep and devastating and long-lasting impact that closing Pinkney is going to have to our students, to our families, to our community, to our neighborhood. Today, I wanted to amplify my daughter's voice, a child's voice in this process, and I want to read a letter that she wrote. Dear school board members, I don't want Pinkney to close because for some people, it feels that they belong. And they have friends that they can trust forever and friends that can never let go of them. And that means a lot to me because I am one of those people. And Pinkney, and Pinkney has made me feel like I know that there is someone I can trust. Sincerely, Claudia. Thank you.
Marcy Assen, Ashley Abbott, and Margaret Grease.
I'm new to the neighborhood, I'm a homeowner, attached here, and I love to see what's going on with our school, past and present. So I just want to say thank you to all of you for your consideration today. We're here because we believe what is best for our community and especially our children. Thanks to all who have made book research and who have made recommendations today. Others have no address specifications, and I want us to solve the problem together. As adults, we make decisions with the best information we have at the time. As we consider additional information presented today and information yet to be learned, let us commit to working with all resources available. As a taxpayer, I would like to see that increase in property value of supporting schools. And Dr. Lewis explained that that's actually done on the state, but no, no way. The other increase that I would like to see and research done is ways to build revenue with solar energy. And I hear a lot of taxpayers to do that. A number of districts in the state, in the country, have built a revenue source as well as instructional opportunities by utilizing solar power. So let us all move forward, building strong foundations for schools. Let us move forward from where we are with decisions that honor our children and our community. It gets thanks for all of your consideration of the information presented today. Now that we know better, let us do better. Please vote yes to say close schools on Monday.
Thank you. Ashley Abbott, and Margaret Grease, and Ashley Abbott.
Hi. Kind of mixed up. I have two kids here and I have two more. And one thing I didn't know if you guys had ever thought about is putting preschool back to the schools. Because I am a player that I would love to put in preschool because I have so much cheaper than regular. So I can work. I, when I was a student here, we had preschool through sixth grade in this building. We had them all lined up in this gym either. And it wasn't in this school gym because half of that was cafeteria back then. So it's like, if your word count's too good, try thinking about maybe preschool because then you get those kids up. Because if you think about it, your count went down because you took the sixth grader out of the building. But anyway, my son, he has a issue and he, I thought after the pandemic that he was going to have to repeat second grade. But when they finally came back full staff to the school, Pinkney, they helped make it where he was comfortable enough. He caught up super quick and he is now a thriving fourth grader. And I'm worried that he won't get the fees and ignore our school because there's so many kids that you can't focus. I loved as a kid, I'm a smaller community, and this isn't really just a school. It's a home, it's a house, we're a family. So closing this school is like breaking up a family. And I love it because I still see teachers that had me as a kid. I was excited because my kids got to come and experience the awesomeness of those teachers. And even like Mrs. T, you retired, but she's still here. And I love it because she had me and now she has my kids. And it's, like I said, it's a big family here. It's not just school you're closing. You're breaking up a family and yeah, safety is, yeah, we get it, but it's also pretty homes that need that family. Because I'm a single mom and so having a family here sometimes can help my kids when I can't give enough to them in home, but I'm trying my best every day. And so that's why this is home for me and I love it and I wish it stays. Thank you.
Margaret Grease, and Christina Mommy.
Good afternoon. My name is Margaret Grease and I am actually here as the board president of the Home Launch Association for Wood Creek Townhomes on North Michigan Street. About a week and a half ago, we learned that the city will be putting a home shelter across the street from our complex. And at the same time, I'd already been planning to come to this meeting, but that has taken all my time, so I have been a little unprepared. Listening to everyone here has been very moving. I also attended Pinkney in the gates with Lynette, who spoke first, and then to Wes, and then Lawrence High. Actually, I piped in front of my childhood home to walk here today, which is just a block away, and it was really kind of powerful for me to realize the difference between a block walk to school and four miles that you're basically going to be asking a child to meet to walk to Deerfield or get there with a car. There's not good transportation options for students. Living on North Michigan, I'm very experienced with the kind of traffic that we have to deal with coming from that neighborhood to get anywhere in town. I, you can tell, and I'm not a small person, and riding my bicycle, I have a friend who lives near Deerfield, I don't feel safe crossing the intersection at Second and McDonald. How do you expect elementary students to feel safe crossing that intersection to get to school? When I was in school here, one of my classmates was killed on Ninth Street, crossing a street where there was not a lighted intersection. And he is in fact the reason that there's a stoplight that make the name today. And I think that, I don't feel safe without that intersection and crossing this traffic. I really don't understand how you possibly make a decision that will require 200 small children to do that every day to get to school. In addition, having the school closed will change the Pinkney neighborhood that I have lived in for most of my life. Having a neighborhood school matters so much to everyone here and to everyone who couldn't be here. There are hundreds, thousands of people who grew up and went to school. And I'm pretty sure that that diversity that everybody's mentioning is partly because of why I am the type of person who feels strongly about equity and social justice and closing this school does none of that. Thank you.
Matthew Frederick, and Christina Montel, and Charles.
Good afternoon, my name is Matthew Frederick. I'm here because it is unfathomable to me that a district that will spend $230 million this year has to close down its school to save $300,000. I literally cannot wrap my head around that and that is all I've been trying to do is figure out why that is the case. I spoke earlier at the earlier meeting about the notice, but I was informed that the district has actually posted a notice in the print version of the Ole Miss Law. And so they can close these schools online. I would think that it would be posted online as well in the interest of transparency and making sure that the property owners that fund a large portion of that $230 million will be made aware of the consequences of this. The property owners have received letters with an on average increase in their assessment of 30%. Who will find out next year what it means to have a flat $20 million general obligation levy assessed on that now 30% higher property tax amount and an $8 million flat levy assessed for the capital outlet fund. A fund that according to the district's audited financial statements does not have very much oversight. That's interesting to me. I sent the district some numbers that contain spending from the check registered and voucher, and I'd like to highlight three of the numbers that over this five-year period the district has spent. $32,500,000 to First Student Inc. Does anybody at the board think that gas is going to become cheaper or labor is going to become cheaper? $22,250,000 to Apple Inc. $13,200,000 to Cisco Kansas City Inc. The district is at risk of being entirely subject to the winds of these private corporations who, as soon as the checks stop clearing, will be gone so fast that the only way that they will be back is to provide services and goods to the remaining private charter schools that got to buy or lease the building to the district at a deep discount. I'll also be submitting a motion that I move the board to take up, which says, "I move that the Board of Education at Unified School District Number 497, Douglas County, Kansas, direct the superintendent and district administration to make all budget documents used during the 2022-2023 fiscal year publicly accessible to the maximum extent possible. Documents shall move, but not be moved into a general ledger expense, regularly receiving all of the documents used by the district for the purpose of preparing for track budgets. Documents should be made available in a designated format and should be made available prior to 12:00 PM on Wednesday, March 27, 2023." Thank you.
Next, Christina Montel, and Charles.
Hi there. My name is Christina Montel. I am a current of a fifth grader and a third grader here at Pinkney, as well as a former officer on the school's PTO. Several people have already spoken to the safety concerns that are involved with the proposed map to redistrict the batteries. And I just want to reiterate some complaints involved with that and bring up some things that haven't been addressed yet, that I don't know if there's a plan for this. I don't know if this is something that the board has considered yet because so much misinformation has not been presented to the public yet and we just got this map a couple of days ago. So we've already talked about the fact that there are no sidewalks on that intersection, which I'm sure you guys are familiar with because your building is literally right there. In addition to that, the speed limits between the Pinkney neighborhood and Deerfield Elementary range, 30 to up to 45 miles per hour through there. So if we are going to ask Pinkney students to walk that route, and I would encourage all of you, you know, family, pretend you have between now and Monday, to walk that route yourself and ask yourself, would I feel okay asking a five, six, seven-year-old to make this trek on foot? If you're going to ask those students to make that journey on foot, are we also going to be able to expect the district and the board to help us petition the city to lower those speed limits? How long is that going to take? Are we going to be able to have enough time to install school zone signs so that we can alert people to the fact that this is now an area where students will be walking during busy morning commute hours? Do we have enough time between now and August to put things into place that we need to in order to ensure the safety of these students that we are asking to make that route? I don't feel like it's enough time. When we were originally looking at schools for closure, Woodland was one of the ones that was potentially up for closure and it was decided that it was going to remain open, largely in part due to the fact that we didn't feel okay asking children to cross the river. I don't see how this is any different to ask our students to cross McDonald on one of two extremely busy intersections. If we made that choice for Woodland, which by the way, I think was the correct choice, why are we okay asking Pinkney to do the same thing without a plan in place and a timeline for how we're going to make that safe? Thank you.
Next is our first, and we're going to leave the board.
Hello. I'm just, I'm more of a journalist. My whole career I've been in education and arts. Okay. My career has been in education and arts and I certainly appreciate your difficulty in dealing with a budget. How someone ever do feel that Pinkney as a neighborhood school or any school, it takes two cohorts to create a school. That's teachers and students. Your first teacher, second, and staff support, including the administration and the class of staff, definitely. All learning that if you don't have a school, you're going to be bottomed or another, small teacher, if you don't go to school, with students and teachers. I do believe that the neighborhood schools, particularly the elementary schools, need to be maintained simply because they are what the transition that has placed from the parent being overly powered, whether to the schools stepping in and not only making them look forward, but helping them make that transition. And basically, here, if you close these schools, you're going to cause not only distress to students, but also to parents. You watch your students on a bus fare out of town or getting McDonald and every other that is said today, which is heartening, which is also a crazy thing. I just have one last story that I heard today in the break, and that was a parent, both my son and my grandchild, all kind of gone to Pinkney. But I heard a parent tell a story that their child said, "Oh, maybe I should go to a private school because why should I, why should I go to Woodcrest or Deerfield?" Who knows when their dad wants to go to those again? So that's the whole thing. It starts a train of thought that as everybody wants to change, it's kicked off. So anyway, please, please, keep our elementary schools, Pinkney particularly, open. This is the most diverse, both in race, religion, and income. And you're a small home, big home, big family, small families, and that's a great diversity as well as.
Thank you. Okay, Jennifer Jennings, then Coen Ego, then Richard Mars.
Thank you for your service addressing these physically impossible problems that we're facing. I am so heartened to be here and hear everyone today is incredibly inspiring and has renewed my hope. I always know that if anywhere in the world, wars can always do better. So I have confidence that this is not a problem. And in fact, my team, I'm going to piggyback on a 45-pound boy back there that did not filter and someone made remarks something about closing Pinkney and just interrupted, "No." No one's what you say, if you've been hurt or properly, knows what you say when you are being faced with bad surprises and bad feelings and don't want to do. Probably the best thing to do is to say, "No." And I know you have a job to be commanding, but I wonder, is it better for you? And I know you have a job to be commanding, but I wonder, is it better for you to just say no? I'm not a good fan of passing problems along. That happens in the education system. Just put them on to the next year, maybe something good will happen. But I would also ask you, are you content, are you satisfied with betraying the public trust? And when I say that, I don't mean that personally. Again, thank you for doing this difficult job, but it occurs to me, I have maybe 15 minutes to prepare for this, but I noted that Broken Arrow, that that land was given by sovereign nations who had their land, obviously, stripped from them. This is rich. Then Hassel gave the city land, that's my understanding anyway, for Broken Arrow. If Broken Arrow survives, I mean, this is sort of irrelevant, but maybe a good name for it in the future would be broken promises. And every year, talk with children about what does that mean and how can we do together? To steal a line to a brilliant help of a great American playwright, she was told in front of the, I think it was called the House Un-American Activities Committee, and they were trying to force her to admit that she was a communist. And her line, and she was very good writing lines, was something to the effect of, I will not cut my fall to fit the fashion of the times. I believe this, oh, they can, okay. Thank you. No.
Hey, Monica, Richard Murphy, and then it's a lot of use like here.
She asked me to speak for her.
Hello. Thank you all for being here and listening to us today. My name is Portia Foad, and I am a parent of a former and current complete member, and also fierce advocate for support for mental health for our children, given my young children's experience in particular. So my youngest son is a third grader, which means he is part of the cohort of children who had a couple of months of kindergarten under their belts before their entire world was offended by the pandemic. Along with a couple of our neighbors and close friends and classmates, we navigated that time with such tenacity. He made walks to this very playground multiple times a week because he could, and that was part of what allowed us, through proximity, to hold on to that connection, that sense of belonging to our neighborhood school. Coming back two years ago and now being in this space and in this community, there's a zeal and a passion to his desire to learn that I have never seen in my other child. He lost Pinkney once already. And I say this because I think in 2023, on the heels of the pandemic, any child who has had that experience and felt trauma through that, but I think it's really important to recognize that if we close a school, that some of these children have an impact, are at cost through that experience, it is a repeat of that same trigger and trauma toward them. Navigating trauma, we are standing in the halls of a place that does an impeccable job supporting its students. My old son attended Pinkney for three years, and he has considerable mental health challenges, and this school went above beyond my dreams in supporting them. He thrived, he prospered here with his staff, the work, and the people sitting right over here, and he excelled in a way that half a dozen other school environments have not been able to do for him. Unfortunately, that is not the case in all of our schools in the district, and sadly, my son is in a long regard in the district because the middle school was not resourced and able to support the needs that he had. So I offer all of these reflections just to challenge you to think about how we impact and how we invest in support for mental health for our kids. The process and the speed with which it's moving is unnerving and does not necessarily model understanding of that and how much that anxiety and time to process is impacting those in this community. So please, if you do make this decision and decide to close the school, I challenge you to invest in a robust plan, hopefully this is our initiative, to support processing and navigating that grief, that significant grief, and to help our children through that in their journey. And not just a plan, but true investment in resources and staffing at these schools in the district to really help our children do better. I think we all know that school and the idea of learning is truly not possible without that as a foundation. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Richard Murphy.
I'm a retired teacher here from Lawrence. I have lived for 35 years through blocks away from Pinkney. My daughter was fortunate enough to go to school at Pinkney through sixth grade. We loved Pinkney. I still love Pinkney. I'm privileged enough to be able to have time to volunteer at Pinkney. So I'm here for hours every week, and I get to work with fourth and fifth graders and second graders, and I'm more in the possibility of Pinkney closing, but I take solace in thinking about that wherever the Pinkney kids go to school next year, they will, they will be in schools where they have teachers to love them and support them because Lawrence has wonderful teachers. And I know it's not going to be the same. Pinkney is really special, but there will be people they connect with, there will be teachers who love them as much as the teachers here. That's hard to believe. I feel sad thinking that there will be no more street dances, no more music programs here, no more child support sales, parent teacher conferences, talking with teachers before and after school, talking with parents. It's been a wonderful experience. My main reason I wanted to speak to this group, though, is to urge you all to stay committed to public schools, and even though a lot of you may feel disillusioned with this process, we have to stick with public schools because the more people who leave public schools and homeschool, they send their children to private schools, the weaker our public schools become. Even in my neighborhood, I know a lot of my neighbors have given up on Pinkney, pulled their kids out and have sent them to private schools in Lawrence, which is really sad and is weakened to Pinkney. So I urge all of you next year to stick to public schools and become great supporters and commit, if your child goes to a new school next year, work just as hard at that new school as you have for Pinkney, and contact your legislators, and stay committed to public schools because that's what our country needs out there. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Christina, you are the reading comments for this. Okay, thank you.
I'm reading for my friend Luana, who I met at a tough time in my early parentage life because she ran a business as a secondhand store for kids, and there are seldom few spaces for children, and even fewer free spaces for children, and even fewer free spaces for children that endure the test of time. I was taught USD 497 to show my word and show evidence. I saw some evidence today that if we close these two schools, it will take this district four years to recoup the money it needs, and if we don't close either of them, it'll take five. I promise you that everyone in this room will be here with you, ensuring that we don't have to have this conversation again in five years. If you can help us to keep this school open, this school means something. This school does hold culture. This is the school that Langston Hughes wrote about when he was saying, "America ain't never been America for me." He learned to hear that he had a voice that people wanted to hear. We still teach it to these kids. Honesty. Oscar. Peyton. Quincy. Ralph. Raven. Richard. Riley. River. Rose. Roosevelt. Rosie. Rowan. Riley. Rylin. Sebastian. Sam. Samantha. Scarlett. Scott. Scott. Simon. Sunny. Sophia. Sophia. Soro. Spencer. Silas. Teana. Taraji. Tayshaun. Tegan. Teresa. Timmy. Tink. Vanessa. Avada. Veronica. Veronica. Vicky. Vida. William. 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 Willow. Xavier. Zadrian. Zalen.
Okay, that concludes our public comments. At this time, I would ask for a motion to close the school. Here it is. I move that our education close in March 25th. Already, school closing has taken a while. Erica, second. Jane, yes. Margaret, yes. Karen, yes. Carol, yes. Dan, yes. We are going to, yes. Thank you. Before we conclude, I wanted to share a couple things. I've heard all the taxi forward chain, 230,000 hours, as our, that's not correct, or little two K S D, central, data central, and the documents for the last 10 years, and see what they're actually are. Also, I want to be sure that the notice of closure hearings was publishable in the motion of law in the legal version, and it was also supposed to be on my version. I checked that, and it's going to be in stage to make sure that it actually appears on the online version of the motion. With that, I wanted to make not only all of you here today, but all the students and staff and all the education, and sharing the comments, and we appreciate your time, and I hope you stay up. Thank you. And with that, very much appreciated.